And he would like to personally thank the driver for everything he had done for his brother. The bus driver was Butch Lilla. And I just wanted to acknowledge that and his efforts in that matter. And then I also want to mention again that we have a arts, Winona Arts project going on. It's this Saturday night in the Masonic Temple. It's called "My Husband, Jim Younger." And it's on Saturday, March 24th at 7:00 PM. It's free. That doesn't mean it's not worthwhile because the city manager will be there and myself and a whole cast of other Winonans. So it's really, it sounds like a, it's a staged reading of a new play. And it's about Cole Younger and the Northfield robbery and Governor Van Sant from Winona and all kinds of good stuff. So come, enjoy it, I'm sure you will. And that's all I had for tonight. City manager?
Well, just a heads up for the council that at the next meeting, we plan to have a discussion about the Deer Park. As you've seen, the recent activities that have taken place, we need to have some direction as to how we're going to proceed with that space going forward. That's all, thank you.
Okay. Roll call?
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilwoman Thurly.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Idan.
Here.
Orzekowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item 2.1 is to consider vacating a city alley for the Winona State University Education Village Development.
Okay. We'll call this public hearing to order and ask if anybody wishes to speak. Anybody wish to speak? Go ahead, state your name and address.
My name is Michael Burnett. I'm an attorney representing Glenn Sanders, who's one of the neighbors of the Education Village. Actually, I'd like to invite somebody from Winona State to be here.
There is.
Oh, there he is.
Thank you. So, Mr. Sanders and the representatives of the university have been looking at this. And I think we've got a agreement in place that all the parties are willing to accept it moving forward. So on the condition that Winona State is accepting an agreement that Mr. Sanders has already signed, we express no objection to their request to have that alley vacated.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from Winona State?
Just since I had a chance to have before, I'll take it, Mark. Thank you, everyone. We, I would say that-
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Terrell Portman. I'm dean of the College of Education and I live on Sandmore Street, just a Madison Elementary School. The agreement that we have, we worked with Glenn back and forth, and so we're in agreement to the point of taking his garbage to the curb. And so I think we're all, we have no objections to part of this, and I think it's a good neighborly discussion, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? One more time, anybody else wish to speak? Hearing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask if there's a motion.
I'll make a motion, introduce the attached ordinance.
Second. Motion by Michelle and seconded by Jerry.
Mayor.
Yes.
Can we just add that you're adopting the findings of the city engineer?
So, so added.
Accepted, okay.
Cool.
Accepted by both the motion and second. So, thank you.
Did you say cool?
George?
Yeah, I just want to commend both parties. It's good to see neighbors work things out to come to an agreement which presumably helps everyone, so makes it a lot easier decision.
Any other comments? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 2.2 is a public hearing on the 818 Mankato Avenue rezoning from R2 to B3.
Okay. Declare that public hearing open and ask if anybody's here to speak.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Council. Excuse me. My name is Roger Thing. I'm here representing the applicant, Trine Development from St. Cloud, requesting rezoning of this parcel. I happy to answer any questions.
Al?
Yeah, I was curious, I mean, you've developed the Sherliffe Senior Living property, is that correct?
Good member, good memory, yes.
Well, you've been here before, so, welcome back.
Thank you, happy to be here.
What are your, do you have any plans for this particular, assuming the rezoning goes forward for that, or anything you can tell us about it?
We are looking at developing that vacant parcel and adding additional rental senior housing for active independent seniors.
Good, well, nice to see you have success and then move forward from that success.
Yes, the Winona market has been very good for us.
Good.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else here to speak to this issue? Not, declare the public hearing closed.
I'll make a motion, introduce the attached ordinance and accept the two attachments.
I'd second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam. Any further? What? Okay.
Do we adopt findings of planning?
Sure. That's what I was trying to say, I just failed you, I'm sorry. I agree.
Okay, cool. Is there any further discussion?
Luke, I've got a question. Is it proper to do this now before you have building plans in front of you or some sort of, or do you think we've got enough information to indicate that this is actually going to go forward or not?
Staff has received preliminary plans from the applicant, Trine Development, and those plans do indicate that, and it will be moving forward through the variance process in terms of roof height, which will be comparable to Winona Health, which is across Mankato Avenue. In terms of parking and circulation and total number of units, we do believe that the preliminary plans of roughly 70 units asked displayed in the public documents before Board of Adjustment will be serviceable and beneficial to the Winona community in that location.
Okay. I just don't like normally to rezone things before they're down the road.
You mentioned roof height, Luke. Is this going to be a different height than the other facility that it be, that we assume attached to?
It will not be attached, our preliminary plans that we have observed, it will not be attached. It will be comparable in height of three to four-story structures up to 50 feet.
Okay. Okay. Paul?
Well, so now, thinking about the two separate buildings, will there be a green space between the two?
Considering the staff has only seen preliminary plans, I would refer you to the applicant, who would probably be happy to answer that or address that question.
But that's really an appropriate question for when the plan comes forward for review.
We have asked for adequate sidewalk access to Mankato Avenue and making sure that we do have green space at the entrance along Menard Road. At this point, though, the site plan, of course, is not-
That's satisfactory.
It's good for the applicant to hear your concerns, of councilwoman.
Other questions or concerns? George?
How many of us here, I know there's some of us, remember what Mankato used to look like compared to the area? I know you do, the area it is now, so, good to see it happen, good development.
Okay. I close the public hearing or not? Okay, all right. Anybody else wish to speak?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, we do have a motion.
Yes, the public hearing is closed.
Yeah, okay. All right. All right, so anybody else have any questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
The way this meeting is going so far, it's a good thing that almost everything on the agenda is related to seniors because we're all going to be needed.
Excuse me.
Except this young councilwoman here.
I'm not quite there yet.
And moving on to the petition's request and communications. Item 3.1, reappointments to the Port Authority of Ernest Gorman and Michael Hanson, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.2 is a reappointments to the Board of Adjustment of Dave Kuba and James Murphy, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.3, reappointments to the Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals of Brian Bealow, Mike Hanson, Dave Sharmer, and Owen Warnicki, and an appointment of Steve Carson. Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Jerry. Any discussion?
Just to thank former city employee Carson for continuing to be involved in the community.
I think he's well qualified for this position.
Yes, definitely.
Yes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.4, appointments to the Fine Arts Commission of Isaac Samus and Benjamin Strand, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.5, Great River Shakespeare Festival Street Closure Request for Sunday, July 15. Moved to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.6 is a craft beer tour agreement with Layton Enterprises for Saturday, June 30th at Lovey Park. Moved to approve the license agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Is this the second year they've done this?
That's correct.
Al, you had a question?
You've answered, you've asked it, and it's been answered.
I read your mind.
Just asking about whether it was a second year for this.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.7 is a request for a temporary wine and beer license for Big Brothers and Big Sisters for that craft beer tour. Moved to approve that license.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.8 is a request by the Reserve Officer Training Corps Program to have an event training on Thursday, April 12. Moved to approve. Second.
Moved by Jerry, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Pam.
Yes, has there been any similar previous events?
Yes.
That wasn't last year, has it, is it?
What was your question?
Has there been a similar previous event?
Down there, training?
Yeah, the 407th Reserve Civil Affairs used to use the same thing quite often. Now, that would have been back, geez, I don't know, before 9/11, before they closed, but it was used quite often.
Paul, you had a question?
So, is this around or near where the Deer Park is? Is that, or just west of the Deer Park?
Deer Park West.
Yeah.
Between the Deer Park and the Dog Park, yeah.
I was going to say, how close is it to the Dog Park? And, okay, as long as there's adequate signage, certainly support their request.
Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
Item 3.9 is a request to hold a parade by Lake Winona Manor on June 12. Moved to approve that request. Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded quickly by Pam. Any questions? This is a great parade. I gotta say, I'm in it every year, I love this parade. It's so much fun. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
Item 3.10 is a request for use of Lovey Park by the Winona County Wellness Committee for an event on Wednesday, April 18. Moved to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.11 is a request by Hope Harbor to hold a donut run around Sinclair Park on June 2. Moved to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam. I have to ask, what is a donut run? I don't know.
It is what it sounds like. Run for donuts.
Okay, all right.
Run for donuts or with donuts?
Or because of.
Because of, all of them, that's the wild.
You just want the donut. The donut lattle or something else.
I guess we'll have to go to find out.
Alex.
Oh, Al?
Just to, you know, you're asking, 7th Street between Kansas and Liberty be blocked off for that morning, have the residents in that area, or I would assume they would be notified prior to this event, just so they have some concern.
And I would note, there are no driveways on that stretch. It's the park, and then they have an alley.
Okay.
So they have one, one block access to their home.
And just so, you know, public service agencies know that as well, I mean, just in case, you know. You run with donuts, it might create some-
The police will know.
That's just me, Steve.
That's okay. We're doing reviews, so, it's all good.
All right, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.12 is to renew the liquor permit for the Winona Tour Boat. Make a motion to approve the consumption.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.13 is a paperback and pieces street closure request for Saturday, May 12. Moved to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.14 is a request for handicap parking at 376 Minnesota Street. Make a motion, introduce the attached ordinance. Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.15 is the new item. It's a request to close a portion of Lake Park Drive for a march and rally on March 24. Moved to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Any discussion?
Just one, and I know staff will do this, but just to give them the parameters of, depending on how large this is, what the restrictions are regarding the adjacent Veterans Memorial.
Okay. Any else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
And under unfinished business, item 4.1 is to worth a contract for the Masonic Temple Performance Use and Upgrade. The bidder is Wapishaw Construction. The recommended bid would include alternate six and seven for a total package of $1,476,884.57. I make a motion to adopt a attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Anything you want to add, Chad? Sorry, we've got questions here, so, start with Pam.
Yeah, yeah. So I would like a little explanation for alternate number six, change backdrop due front, to front rear projection.
Mayor and council, we are recommending that accepting alternate seven, that allows us to be prepared for the possibility of projection coming into that space, and that we would have the ability to do projection, obviously, from backstage or front, front stage in the house. I just, it really prepares us for the future for projection. And at that price, we're recommending that we get prepared to do that.
Okay.
Paul?
One bidder?
Mayor and council, we received one bid.
So what, is it, there's lack of interest for doing this type of work, or qualified contractors aren't in the neighborhood, or what's?
We had roughly four general contractors at the pre-bid meeting. Feedback is, it's a difficult project, and I think that, if I had to sum it up, I think that the process of staging and the limitations that the building provides for staging for construction becomes an issue for specifically non-local bidders.
Al?
How does this fit into that, the bond that was sold earlier, the $1.8 million bond?
Mayor and council, this is the $1.8 million that was allocated in the 2017 Recreation Bond. So the total that we allocated in that bond was the $1.8 million. We have design costs, the contingency and construction, and so that's, this project is that $1.8 million.
Okay. I see we've reached out to Miller Dunwitty again. I mean, is this because they've done all the other preliminary or studies of work at the, they've been the go-to architects for this project, so?
Mayor and council, primarily because they conducted the HSR and have the background information and, I guess to use the term history with the building, and so we've continued to use them, correct.
Okay. Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
And under new business, item 5.1 is the Lake Winona Waterfall Management Framework. Make a motion to approve the framework plan.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. John, you look like you would like to say something?
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here to really answer questions, happy to provide some elaboration on the plan and specifics if there's interest, but more than anything, if you're comfortable with it, then I'm just here to answer questions.
Okay. Any questions for John?
Al? I've had some comment about one of, you know, the discussion points regarding waterfall, and that is the euthanizing of the waterfall. Can you kind of explain what your plan is recommending here?
The framework lists all options for waterfowl management that we, that I encountered. Our recommend, my recommendations are not to euthanize or to kill any living, breathing waterfowl. We would, one of the recommendations is to oil or oil the eggs of the waterfowl or remove those eggs, preventing them from becoming goslings or ducklings. But once they are no adult, I'm not recommending adult or young geese be, or ducks be removed.
I thought this was an interesting report, as far as the summary of public comments, too. I mean, it all ran the gamut of things. One of the comments was somebody who was interested in taking the unwanted geese in, over to Wisconsin. Can you comment on that option?
Well, this was an option that resulted from having an input period. There was a game warden in Buffalo County who contacted me, suggesting that there was a farm or a new farm in his county that was interested in taking on the geese. So this is another option that I added to the framework, given that there was the possibility of, of wanting to take, to take geese. So instead of, instead of oiling the eggs or moving the eggs, those could be allowed to mature either at the farm or once they're, once the young have hatched, to be taken and, and be put on the farms. This would be another option for the geese to be somewhere where they're desired, and it would not cause a, a problem for the Lake Park area.
So, so what's the, what's the scenario? What would be the first step, second step, and so on, given approval here at the table?
The, really be a five-part recommendation plan. One is to work on a no-feeding ordinance and ban to eliminate park doors from feeding the waterfowl. The second piece would be to install vegetative barriers and fencing to keep the geese from areas that have a high probability of human contact and from largely keeping their droppings from entering the pathway and other places where people, people are active. The third piece would be to try decoys, install decoys around the Lake Park area, to, decoys being coyotes or, or dogs, to essentially scare away the, the birds and keep them from feeling at home, seeing them as predators. The fourth piece would be to oil the eggs or remove the eggs to keep the population from expanding. And the fifth piece would be to monitor progress, to continue to take counsel of the, the waterfowl in the area, and, and to continue to work with our kind of local partners, whether that's the neighborhood cities and, or places like the Minnesota State Southeast where there are geese populations, and to coordinate our efforts. So that's, that's the plan, and I would recommend doing all five at once to have optimal results. The more, the more we make the geese and ducks feel uncomfortable, the less likely they are to want to nest and remain in the Lake Park area.
Thank you.
Al?
Yes. I have a, I have a question about that taste aversion chemical. I understand this is pretty expensive and is not likely to be on the top of your list of alternatives to try. But do you know anything about that, John, about the effect on other wildlife?
I have not done much research onto the sort of unintended consequences or accessory impacts of the chemical. I know that there are a few places that do use it in public areas where there would be relatively high degree of contact by other animals and people, but I, I can't say specifically. I think it would really depend on what the chemical, what, what option we use, there are a variety out there.
Okay. It's on the list, so I, I have a concern about that. I would like to know if, if it's planned to keep the aerators off. Are we planning to keep those aerators off so that we don't, so that we don't encourage geese to stick around, geese and ducks to stick around in the winter?
I spoke with the park maintenance superintendent, and he, he has no foreseeable plans to keep the aerators, other than the one near the visitor center operational. The other, they, those, those other aerators, I think there's two others, have not been used in the recent past, and there's no, to my knowledge, no desire to have them operational, partly for the geese, but there isn't, and I mean, partly for the geese and ducks, that's, that's one reason to keep them off.
And why is that one being kept on? Because there were quite a few ducks and geese.
Mayor and council, we have approval to have the aerator shut off for a period of time, early in the freeze season, I guess. And then we do turn it back on primarily for the operation functionality of that aerator, that we need to run it each season. And we are seeing impact on the footings of that fishing pier. So we are concerned about that thaw and the pushing of the ice onto that fishing pier. And so those are the two primary reasons why we keep the aerator going. However, we do try to keep it off so that the, the open water freezes, hopefully takes the habitat someplace else, and then we turn the aerator back on. And just for knowledge, that's a process. It's not an easy task for park maintenance to do that, but that's the plan that we've been going with.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that fishing pier. I know a lot of, a lot of people do.
George, you have something?
Yeah, just one question. With the oiling of these eggs, did you say that you would need DNR approval to do that, or?
Yes, sir. We would require to get a DNR permit that would allow for the oiling of the eggs. So that is one, one piece of approving this plan is to, to go forward with applying to that permit.
Michelle?
Did we ever just explore the simple option of allowing people to walk their dogs around the big lake? Because I have to say, around the small lake, you don't encounter much in the way of wildlife. I mean, it seems like a pretty simple solution for, I mean, I have, I have a sense that maybe those decoys aren't going to be very effective, even though we think geese are stupid. I don't think they are that dumb. So, I mean, but if you want to scare a goose or a duck, a dog on a leash is a, a good way to do it.
That is certainly an option. I do make, I think, a passing reference to, that would be, that would be one, I have seen that the geese, and especially the geese, responding negatively to people who are walking their dog around the big lake, who right now are not supposed to be walking their dogs there, but when they do, the geese do scatter.
But it seems to me it's a humane and completely functional way for us to address the goose-duck issue.
It probably would not completely remove the problem unless, what I'm trying to say is geese and ducks would probably still be established, it just keeps them from being less out in the open. It wouldn't have, wouldn't remove them, it wouldn't probably cause them to completely relocate, but it would probably keep them from being in the path there. So that would be my, my guess.
We're not actually going to get them all to relocate, right? Honestly? I mean, it's open water, even if we don't feed them. I mean, it's open water, even if we don't feed them. I mean, there are bound to still be some there. I think you're talking about control of the population not growing past what we're happy with and maybe minimizing it. I don't know. Just something to think about.
Mayor and council, I'd be missed not to get up and say something, just about that. Sorry for the time. Certainly an option to allow dogs on the east path. We would have to have a larger discussion about that because then it opens up the other conflicts for users that use the path for bike, rollerblading, walking. And so then we've got the other issue of the user conflict and not the duck issue or geese issue. And so we have to have that discussion about, do you shift to the, allow dogs on the east and not on the west lake? Because then we have users that say, I don't want that conflict with the dog on the lake.
I understand. I mean, somehow we make it work on the small lake, the dogs and the bikers and the walkers and the, I mean, it all seems to work. I'm not saying that we should do that. I'm saying it should be something that's looked at because I have, I mean, I just feel like the dogs are a natural deterrent.
And in a greater scope, we need to bring back to council still, with the establishment of the dog park, some of these rules still need to come back to council about where we allow the dogs on leash off leash.
Downtown Levy Park, all the, yeah, absolutely.
Paul?
Back to the aerator schedule. Is it, so it looks to me, looking at the piers, one of the main piers, large U-shaped pier is already not even supporting the, or footing, isn't even supporting the pier. So are some other piers doing the support? And then the second follow-up question related to that, is it possible, and maybe this is already being done, to run the aerator so that it runs for a short period of time? An inch or two of ice is allowed to freeze, keeping the waterfall off. And then before it gets thick and difficult again to start it up, so every four or five days, something like that, is that possible?
Mayor and council, the first part of that question, we'll look at those footings again. I know that Marty with Park Maintenance is looking at the bridge at the west lake to check the footings and this fishing pier. So we'll have to get back to you on its condition so we can do that. The schedule for the aerator, we could look at that. We know that we have seen the natural flow between the west and east lake keep that area open regardless of the aerator being on and off. But certainly, we're open to either options. I just know that from staff, it is labor-intensive to turn on and turn off that aerator. And so we've, in the past, again, like I said, we've let it freeze over and then tried to go and turn it back on once the geese are gone. But we certainly could look at that option as well.
Al? You know, this seems to be a big inclusion in the comprehensive recreation plan that, you know, we're dealing with. So I hope that's a part of that going forward.
We'll make sure, the ISG is already, does have the draft of the plan that's before you tonight, and so they're well aware of that. And then certainly we'll continue to discuss dogs in the park system.
Paul?
One final note. I just want to thank John for all his work on this. It's actually been a fairly intensive amount of work. And also acknowledge the collaborative work with Healthy Lake Winona, who volunteers have worked really tirelessly to kind of help coordinate some of these efforts to come up with some solutions.
George?
For what it's worth, I had a retired firefighter contact me, and he has a drone. And he said he would be willing to chase geese with that drone. And he says, you could move them. Just throwing it out there as a point of information.
I didn't see that on the plan that we have.
No, 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 that's not in front of us.
That was the discarded sixth step.
Step six.
I didn't see drone strikes on it.
But he would volunteer his time to do it. He's a very good operator.
At least one.
Yeah.
You don't have to answer that.
Sorry, John, sorry.
Anything else? All right. We're going to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 5.2 is the Boathouse LLC lease agreement. Make a motion to authorize the state clerk and mayor to sign that agreement? Seconded at.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam. Discussion? Ed, Lyon, you want to say anything? If you do. All right. Al? This is a two-year agreement, is my understanding. Is that similar to the previous agreements? And also, is the, you know, the rental, 5% of the gross up to 10K, is that the same as it has been in the past?
Mayor and council, the structure of the term is a little bit different from previous. We have the two-year term with the renewal option. So that is a little bit different from the original and some of the extensions that we offer. And the revenue system is the same as previous agreements.
I have one question, Chad. Under 7C, it talks about the schedule for the restaurant's going to be open year-round, which I think is wonderful, and only close for a limited period of time due to winter weather conditions. Maybe I'm not reading this right, but it says, "Lee C. shall provide to the Parks and Rec Department in writing, no later than March 1 of each year, this lease is scheduled about hours of operation." Then it goes on to say, "Lee C. shall give Lee Sora 15-day notice of its intent to close the restaurant due to winter weather conditions," and shall indicate the length of the closure. 15 days ahead of time? Are you supposed to know what the weather's going to be? Or is that, am I reading this wrong?
Mayor and council, that clause, we know, has some ambiguity in it. And again, it's based on weather. So what has happened since the last agreement is the city, through the 2017 bond issue, we did some improvements to the boathouse restaurant facility, including an HVAC upgrade. The building is not originally designed to have year-round activity in it. The upgrade in the HVAC should assist and help the boathouse restaurant to be open longer terms, meaning the entire calendar year, with the exception that we know that sometimes in late December or through the, you know, long days of January, it's going to be too cold for that HVAC system to accommodate the needs or the warmth that building needs. And so we have agreed, although maybe ambiguous in the agreement, that if we hit that cold snap in January, or it appears that we, the HVAC this year specifically, isn't handling that building that's not designed for winter use, then Lyon and Ed would give us a 15-day notice that they're going to close for the season until warmer temps arrive. So we, the intent of the agreement is that it's a year-round operation. We need this first year to kind of test that HVAC system out to see if that really truly can accommodate year-round activities.
Okay. Start with Pam.
I just wondered, I remember when that building was built, and I believe it was built as a really summertime use only. Is this building really insulated for winter use? And who's paying for the electricity or for the heat?
The building is, I think, adequate as far as insulation is concerned. The issue is the patio area. And again, maybe Ed and Lyon can speak to that a little bit better than I can, just with their, as it relates to their operations. But it's really the patio area that was now enclosed with the windows that is, in a sense, causing the issues. But I'll let them address that.
And who is responsible for paying the heating bills?
We pay the Excel bill.
Excuse me?
Boathouse? Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So if you have any questions? I mean, it is still cold in the winter there. And the indoor space, especially with the grills fired up and everything, stays relatively warm in the winter. I wouldn't say we have the biggest problem with heat retention inside, it's just a small building itself. But Chad's right, the patio area, although the new walls that we're building inside that kind of house the windows is insulated, and there is some other insulation work done. It's really a three-season kind of porch, even with the windows and the extra HVAC. So I think as far as the ambiguity goes, you know, we're just going to have to play it by ear this year and see how it goes. I mean, there's a lot of limitations to that space in the winter. For one, you still have to go outside to access the bathrooms, which are heated by wall-unit space heaters. So I don't know, some of you folks were at a meeting that we had last year where we discussed costs in the wintertime and losses and things like that. And so, you know, there's a lot of risk that goes along with keeping the place open 12 months a year. And, I mean, I'm guessing this year we're going to run into a point where it's not really feasible to operate when it's 10 below zero, you know? And then to fire it up and close it and open it and inform staff of what's going on, you know? I think the flexibility in the lease will allow us to handle those situations as may occur.
Okay, so then we'll just see how it works in this next year and then maybe adapt it after.
Well, without a doubt, the windows and the HVAC unit will allow our buffer seasons in the spring and the fall to be, you know, considerably longer.
Great. Well, we look forward to you getting open.
Thank you. We look forward to opening.
When do you expect that will be?
Well, we're hoping the lease gets taken care of, and there's some other maintenance kind of issues around the place concerning the construction that happened this fall and winter. And we hope to be open within two or three weeks.
Great.
George?
I believe the deport authority did help put finance to windows, correct?
Yes, they did.
Okay. You need warmer weather.
It's coming.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Full vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. All right, approved.
Item 5.3 is to word the contract for the library historic structures report to Miller Dunwitty. Make a motion to adopt the attack resolution.
Second.
Michelle and seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Al? So this total is $50,000. That's what I'm gathering from the agenda item and the detail.
Mayor and council, we were granted $10,000 from the State Historical Society in December with a $40,000 grant match that we allocated in the 2018 budget. Miller Dunwitty's proposal came in a little bit under the $50,000. We've got a little bit of contingency in there as well.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Here he is.
Item 5.4 is applying to the Minnesota Green Corps.
I'd make a motion to approve this request. Seconded at.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here he is.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
We'll start with Michelle.
I am free of concerns at this time.
Free of concerns, all right. Jerry, pass. Concerns. Al? Happy spring tomorrow. I'm curious about the status of the Broadway project, the road dial that we've applied for and where that's standing right now. So I appreciate an update at some point on that grant application. Michelle, is it a concern?
I do, I forgot. Some of the businesses downtown asked if there can be a day where we have a Main Street cleanup from the street sweepers. In the spring and fall, because of all the parking, it gets very limited sweeping. So they're asking if maybe we can have like the no parking on Main Street one day and then on Third the next, so that the street sweepers can get right up to the curb. Because a lot of those businesses are coming out and trying to clean up, and then you have the filth in the street. And we all know what happens after the snow melts. So I don't know if that's possible, that we can look at a schedule like that, but I know they'd appreciate it. Sorry, thank you for letting me say that again.
Anything else, Al? You were good. Inevitably, if you do that, Michelle, it'll snow the next day.
I leave that in the capable hands of staff to determine when the best time is.
Pam?
But you're correct.
No concerns. Paul?
There are two items. First off, I would like to thank the mayor and manager Sarvi for pieing me in the face on pie day.
Grounded right in.
Well, I didn't. Well, you were, I couldn't see after I had mine. I had the person in front of you. It was a fun event and for a good cause. And I want to thank Leslie and the library for making that happen and making my week in my pie day. The other thing is, I just want to encourage my fellow constituents to attend the all- aboard meeting. They'll be talking about the TCMC second train. It's really, I think, an opportunity for Winona, our community, to have a daylight passenger train, one that can park you at Union Station in St. Paul in time for a hockey game and dinner. It's really an option. Contact your elected representatives and let them know that you would support such a thing. It would be a great opportunity to bring tourists to this community to experience the Winona's Original Eight. That's all I have.
George?
I am pleased to announce that the burned property on Mankato Avenue that was severely burned by fire on New Year's Eve has been torn down today. So certainly good to see that and no one gets hurt on it. And also, I'd like to send out birthday greetings to Gertrude Gabrick, who just had her 99th birthday. So if everybody's on board, we'll be singing "Happy Birthday" next year. And also, on Mankato Avenue, there is a new business called Encore Salon. It's right next door to the Mankato Bar. And while you are waiting for a train, you'll have plenty of time to go in and get a haircut. And you won't have to even, you can leave your car right where it is, out in the lane of traffic. That's all I have.
I still say food truck, George. Just get a food truck and plant it down there.
To the consent agenda, there are three items. Approval of the minutes for March 5, the final adoption of an ordinance for two 30-minute parking spaces on Main Street, and a claim against the city by Robert Dobbs.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Al and seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor, I move we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn immediately. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.